Looks like we have four council members on the call, so.
And Mayor Kuss will land now.
Thank you. Call to order a work session for the Normal Town Council. Please call the role.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Nord. Ms. Smith. Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Thank you. The governor has issued a disaster declaration related to the public health concerns caused by statewide COVID-19 pandemic. As mayor, I've determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the risk of exposure to the COVID-19 virus stemming from an indoor gathering, and that the remote meeting is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the council's staff and general public. We have quite a bit to cover tonight in this work session. I will say that there's no decisions going to be made here tonight. This is more for information and background from staff to better understand some of the parameters. One, the American Rescue Plan from the federal government and the State of Illinois Police Reform Measures. So. Excuse me, Ms. Reese, I'm going to turn it over to you and we'll get started.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Your comments are exactly on point. We have a number of items to discuss this evening. For your work session, we have three presentations or three discussion topics. The first one, the American Rescue Plan, is going to be presented by Finance Director Andrew Hune. And following Andrew's presentation, we'll counsel can have discussions, ask questions of staff and the like, and then we'll move into the Police Reform Act, sharing information with you on what the recent State of Illinois Act, what it is, how it applies to Normal, and Police Chief Rick Bleisner will be presenting that information. And then we're going to be ending up with a group of young citizens who want to share their thoughts with you regarding playgrounds and playground accessibility. So a few great topics. What I would ask of council tonight, since we are going to try to stay on schedule, is that you hold your comments and questions on that particular subject until after staff's presentation. So I would ask that Mr. Hune conduct his American Rescue Plan presentation, and then we'll field council questions if that's all right. And then same for Police Chief Bleisner's presentation. With that, I'm going to ask Mr. Hune to share information with council on the recently adopted federal regulation, the American Rescue Plan Act, and we'll certainly respond to questions and go from there. So, Mr. Hune?
Thank you. Yes, we're going to go through a number of slides tonight that cover what amounts to the American Rescue Plan Act and how it impacts the town and local municipalities. It's a 1.2, $1.9 trillion package. And I kind of took a bit of a pause when I prepared this slide, because I never written the word trillion on any kind of PowerPoint slides, so that was the first for me. So what is the plan about? Of that 1.9 trillion, $350 billion is designated as coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. There are several buckets of money within the 1.9 trillion, or 350 billion go to state and local municipalities. And you can see here the list on the slide. 195.3 billion to states, the counties are gaining a piece. Metro cities are gaining a piece, and they define metro city as 50,000 population or above. They gain direct payments, tribal governments, and territories and non-metro cities, of course. So you see some pretty large dollars there. In terms of Illinois, Illinois is going to get 8.13 billion to the state. 2.73 billion will be divided among the metropolitan cities, and we're going to go into what those are. And then 2.46 billion to the counties in Illinois. So in terms of just some background, in terms of the numbers, to get a sense of the dollar values here, the payments to all states from the $350 billion, 1.95 billion, 27 billion is going to California, 15, you can see to Texas, and of course, Illinois is getting the 8.127 billion. For counties, $65 billion. Obviously, Cook County is the big player here, and I put that on the screen to show you they're getting a billion dollars. Champagne, Peoria, and McLean County, they're at 33.3 million. Of course, metropolitan cities is kind of where we're obviously interested in more than anything. Chicago, again, a significant player in terms of population and need, almost $2 billion there. And you can see I picked off a lot of our counterparts or peer governments in our area to give you a sense of what they're getting. Some very significant dollars coming to the communities across all of the state of Arizona, all of the country, and surely in our part of the world here, 10.8.79 billion going to the town. In terms of timing, we're going to get half that money sometime this month. We have gone through everything we need to go through to become eligible to those funds, to make sure the gateway to our banking accounts is available to the US Treasury. Those are all in place now through finance, so we're just awaiting the money to come over. And we're watching for it, of course. And then the plan also requires, the act also requires that 12 months later, after we get that first installment, we get the second installment of $5.4 million. So we should see $5.4 million sometime this month, and then a year from now again. And in terms of timing for spending, the act requires that we either spend or obligate all the funds we have by December 31st of '24, and then all the funds need to be spent for completed projects by December 26. So we do have some time to do some thoughtful planning on this, and we'll go into more detail of that in a few more slides. So what can the funds be used for? Again, I kind of use this idea of buckets. There's different components of spending we can do. I'll go into some detail in the next few slides on all these areas, but these are the five main ones. Obviously, public health expenditures, anything that was negative impact to the economy, loss of your municipalities, premium pay for essential workers, and then, of course, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure needs. All of these categories, we have a fairly broad ability to spend within them. There is going to obviously be an accounting. This is essentially a grant that we had to respond to with compliance reporting in terms of what we spend the money on, in terms of timing. So we do certainly need to be very careful, but where we spend it within those categories. But the categories do give you some broad flexibility to meet your community needs. So this first one, support public health expenditures. You can see a lot of it's going to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID. And you can see that I'm not going to read these points off to you, but you can kind of see from vaccination programs to testing to PPE purchases. On the other side, you enhance public data systems, make more public awareness, enforce public health orders, a variety of things, even ventilation improvements to hospital settings and healthcare settings. So a lot of money is there to directly deal with the public health issue of COVID. Also, within that same bucket for public health, there's a trending towards behavioral healthcare issues. Everyone has seen through this process a significant tick up in mental health issues due to COVID and some of the things that lead to that. So there is substance abuse, there's hotlines, crisis intervention, a lot of outreach programs through social services and healthcare services for the mentally ill and folks that are experiencing more than that this last year or so. And then, of course, there is money allocated or allowed to be spent in terms of eligible spending on employee cost in those sectors. Healthcare, human services, public safety, public health, they're all there to provide expense coverage to provide those services. The second big bucket is addressing negative economic impacts. And this is where we start talking about providing unemployment benefits and job training, you know, housing and food sources, loan programs for small businesses. A big sector of this is helping the recovery tourism, travel, and hospitality sectors that have been hit significantly by this. And then, of course, rebuilding public sector capacity. And what that really speaks to is, again, making available through public sector economic relief programs. They talk a lot about investing in data analysis, technology infrastructure, target outreach. Those are all things in the act that we kind of need to find. But the basic premise there is simply to make available the public sector to get back on its feet, to help the public in this time. Also, a lot of the act is trending and slanted towards the hardest hit communities and families. They refer to this kind of disproportionately impacted. These, of course, are the lower-income neighborhoods and communities where their access to community health is not always available. There's some disparities there. They're talking about homeless programs, affordable housing, counseling, anything that can improve the neighborhood's ability to become more of a high-performing, more economic opportunity there, looking for new learning services for school districts that are generally more poor, tutoring, after-school programs, mental health programs, and a lot of childcare and health welfare programs for that. So a lot is focused on kind of the underserved and unserved area or the harder-hit areas of the community in this funding. Restoring lost public sector revenue, this, of course, is, you know, kind of near and dear to my heart in terms of, you know, revenue loss for the municipalities. There's, this is a formula-driven calculation, essentially says, what was your revenue loss from COVID? And you basically compare that to a non-COVID year in the past. And then you come up with a number, and then that number becomes an available amount to spend in vital public services. They want us to essentially try to eliminate any cuts that might have hampered economic recovery, develop programs that can help the economy in those areas. And that might be restoring certain cuts in the government, again, that help the residents, you know, get on with their normal life, their normal economy, and help weather those downturns. Another section, another bucket per se, is premium pay for essential workers. You can see the list there on the screen. This is getting at this idea that there might be some employment shortages or challenges to keep people on staff due to, you know, burnout or too much work or trying to recover certain services that were hit hard. They're making funds available to get a premium to these, to these pay, to get these systems back in place. Childcare workers, educators, school staff, social services, get these programs back on speed, and even offer premium pay to bring that staff in where there are shortages in terms of nursing homes or hospitals or healthcare systems, groceries, restaurants, and so forth. Again, recognizing we need to inject some of these sectors in with some more cash and more pay to help get that back in order or get that back online. Investing in water and sewer infrastructure, this is a big area also in the act. Talks specifically about, you know, improving drinking water quality, wastewater infrastructure. And this is from A to Z. The act pretty much allows you to, anything you can do, it can be an improvement in distribution or transmission, storage, drainage, lead line services, facilities, treatment centers. It's really wide open for any kind of capital project that would improve and help the system to become more quality. The last bucket is also talking about investing in broadband infrastructure. This is an interesting area. Again, you're targeting kind of the underserved or unserved populations. Again, the slant towards helping that portion of the community. The goal is to provide high-speed, reliable, you know, affordable broadband service. Again, the idea is to look for where there's an acute need. If it's, whereas it's underserved or no service, that means basically affordable service. There is service pretty much everywhere in most communities. It might not be affordable to a lot of these populations. And this idea of last mile connectivity to households and businesses, make it available from their homes and their businesses versus having to go somewhere to find that coverage. And there's also some speed requirements. It can't be just, it has to be covered as meaningful. 100 megabytes per second upload-download speed. There can be some exceptions to that, but anything that we would do or a government would do in this money has to be, you know, kind of to the underserved, to the extent it can be done, or to prepare for a better economic future for those areas, and has to be meaningful service in terms of speed. There are things we can't use the funds for, and I know many of you might be familiar with these. The first one they make very clear is we can't offset a tax reduction or delay a tax increase by using these funds. We can still do, you know, tax cuts or delay tax increases, but we can't use the ARPA funds to offset that loss as the other raised revenue, reduced spending, or higher revenue from economic growth. So they just don't want us to use the funds to essentially satisfy a decrease in taxes. They want kind of business as usual there, and they want the funds to go to our services. We can't fund our pensions, you know, basically over and above normal contributions. We can't fund our debt service. We can't pay legal settlements or judgments that we have. Again, basically, the idea here is simply to provide these funds to enhance the economic speed of the recovery, public employees, small businesses, families, and not to kind of do things we already would automatically do as a governmental body. So some considerations with this funding. This is a unique situation for sure, kind of unprecedented in terms of money coming from the federal government to, first, just everyday households to all levels of government. And it's kind of staff's recommendation to be thoughtful in this process, and we certainly have time to do this. You know, we want to do things that are within our core capacity to do, and what's meant by that is essentially we're not necessarily experts in providing business loans. We can do those things, or health care, we can do those things. But there are ways to fund those things with our money, to put the money in the pockets of folks who do that and can deliver those services. So we want to think about that. Is the expenditure increasing the town's economic success and positions for better future? Does it help the underserved? You know, does this speed recovery? Is it a broadband service? Is it a water, sewer, infrastructure project? So these are the things you just kind of want to think about, and you can tick off your own checklist in your own head, of course, as we go through, quickly decide what the council wants to do. Well, I, you know, staff would advise if you meet these requirements, then I think we're in pretty good position to use the money in an effective way. We do have some recommendations. I would consider them kind of high-level recommendations for the town, for the council to consider. And I'm going to discuss timing in the next slide, which is one of the final slides, actually. So there, you know, small business development center, there are needs there. And this is a good place where the town could provide money to that industry, that office, and let them do what they do best. Community healthcare clinic is another real good one, because then, yeah, obviously outreach to that, the folks they serve is significant and needed. It's not our wheelhouse, but we can certainly increase funding and pass some of those funds to that healthcare clinic to provide their services, enhance their services, and help that population. One specific thing that came up among a lot of my colleagues and talking to city management and so forth is this idea of forgiving the debt that is owed for a water bill or utility bill that we charge. The council is probably aware we are carrying a receivable right now, because we haven't turned people's water off through this whole process. And the folks that were unable to pay their bill due to financial hardship were not, but they still had water service. They are, they're developing a fairly sizable bill now to us. There was some discussion about using these funds to essentially satisfy the account receivable, not write it off, and then also forgive the debt to the individual. Kind of a win-win. We get the money, and the resident who can't afford to pay is to lead to that responsibility. Again, there are some pluses and minuses to that, but it's something we always share as a possibility. We also want to look at the cuts that we did make during this process in the budget to see if we can restore some of those things. These are cuts that we hope, if we restored them, it would, again, help the economy, would help to get these back on track, and also help some of the deficits we might have in our staffing size now. Again, water, sewer, infrastructure projects, you know, those are out there, and they can certainly be selected, and the money can be used for that, and that's always a good purpose. Broadband networks is kind of the same mantra there. There's going to be needs in the future for more broadband technology, more IT technology. Touch everything, so that's obviously an area we want to leverage significantly with these dollars. Again, a lot of the idea is if we can do things that are going to build economic development, economic benefit in the long run, then the act sees that as a good use of the funds. And then connect transit, again, that serves a certain population that needs that transit ability. There are programs that connect transit could probably leverage further with additional dollars from the town, and that may be a good use. So those are just some thoughts and ideas. I know the council will be debating this for some time in the future. In terms of timing, you know, I think I do want to stress we have time to decide this. You know, a gun's not ready to spend the money right away. We don't even have it yet. We will have $5.4 million prior to this month sometime. We could consider doing some kind of mid-year change of the budget to meet an immediate need if we can get a collective idea of what to use the funds for from council. But this is a nice reminder, we're heading into budget period for 2023. We kick out the budget July and August, coming up very soon. And we can use a lot of that planning structure that's already in place on how to use this new, you know, one-time cash available to satisfy certain needs and use that process to plan that. Again, a year from now, we'll get $5.4 million more that can be allocated during that budget cycle or even during the next budget cycle. You know, we have some time to think through the timing of this, because we can spend or obligate by the end of '24, and then everything gets spent by the end of '26. So we've got several fiscal years to work within these funds, and the idea is simply to be thoughtful on where to go. US Treasury just released information last week on some more, on the details of this plan, and we're kind of going through it pretty closely now. But they have provided good guidance so far, more to come. But this will be a grant program that will have to, you know, fill compliance reports and quarterly reports and annual reports. And I have confidence that we'll certainly, we can do that no problem. We're used to doing those such things. But again, we want to focus on what the act's trying to do in terms of benefit and recovery for the economy and the underserved, and then put our money in those buckets appropriately. That, with that, that really completes the presentation on this. I want to turn it back over to City Manager Reese to address and start any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hune. I think he certainly adequately summarized what the act is and the eligible buckets, so to speak, of how those ARPA dollars can be spent and allocated. That slide 18 that Mr. Hune reviewed in terms of some recommended uses or uses for consideration. I would say recommendation might even be a little bit strong, but we wanted to put some things on the table that we believed could fit within those eligible buckets of expenses. And certainly, I think the biggest takeaway here is that we have time to be thoughtful and intentional on how we want to utilize those funds and try to find the most impactful way to use those dollars. So with that, Mayor, I think that concludes our presentation on this topic.
Great. Thank you. I'll start with a question, Andrew. Other than the formula you referred to, are these buckets have a percentage maximum? Do we have to split it by percentage among the four buckets, or can we pretty much custom-tune that? Obviously, we want to move forward with this, addressing a broad base of needs and not put a lot of money in one pot and not much in the other. But are there guidelines or are there requirements in the act that require us to say 25% in this bucket, 30% in that bucket, et cetera?
Right. No, the act gives us a lot of freedom there, and we could pick one bucket entirely and put all the money towards that. So really, the council has a great deal of discretion on how they wish to spend between those buckets and within them themselves.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
A couple of questions. So if in our, because I understand we're considering deferring an extended discussion of ideas to a longer work session. But if the council has ideas, how and who will develop some cost projections so we get a sense of whether or not an idea might be really expensive against one that, okay, that looks like that's manageable, and we could continue looking at other projects? So the cost associated with ideas, how would that be developed?
Ms. Smith, staff will be working on that. So certainly, the items that were suggested on slide 3, or excuse me, slide 18, in terms of potential use of funds, staff will continue to put some thought into that and refine those dollars in terms of what an allocation could look like to meet some certain project needs. And then if council has any additional recommendations, the things that we should give some attention to, staff will do that. We'll put thought and analysis into other possible projects or expenses.
And Ms. Smith, just, I would like to caution council on this to not hit staff with an extensive list of things to prioritize, or not to prioritize, but to put an expense on. It could get well out of hand. So I think we need to be intentional and a little more broad-based than possible.
And then, could you also share with us a timeline for when you're asking for ideas to come in so that there's sufficient time to prepare those projections?
Sure. Okay, I'm going to actually say sooner rather than later, frankly, because we are going to be putting some numbers together. For example, on the broadband project that Mr. Hune mentioned, that's already been on our radar, and our INT director and that department have been focusing on that need for the community. So we'll be giving that more serious consideration, and we'll have dollars together in terms of potential project later this summer. And as Mr. Hune mentioned, we will be getting involved in our budget preparation for fiscal year '22, '23 later this summer. So we would like to have all of that information put together by then.
And to avoid getting down into the weeds at this stage, would it be possible for the town staff to share those slides with council members so that we could disseminate the information on our social media sites to solicit citizen feedback? Because there's not sufficient time with the current pandemic restrictions to plan anything large. But I think it would be beneficial if we could reach out to citizens and request their feedback and help them understand what the constraints are and some of the limitations.
Sure, we can certainly share the slides. I will indicate that this is live stream, so this meeting and conversation will be available on the town's YouTube channel, and so that will also be available for folks to review.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Yeah, I'm jotting a few notes here. A couple of questions. What about how we, is there a way, phrase it this way, is there a way for us to work collaboratively across different government bodies? So in, for example, the county and Bloomington, and in particular, I'm thinking about mental health. So while we are thinking community healthcare clinic, and that's an excellent idea, can we think broader in terms of the bigger goal that we've had for a number of years as a community, a set of communities to work on mental health? So what are our thoughts, or have we even teased that out with our city and county friends?
We haven't yet talked to the county, and frankly, I haven't spoken with the county or the city about potential cost sharing or contributions toward a joint initiative. But certainly, that can be something we continue to discuss with them.
Okay. That's all I have for now. You might have another question, though.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks. I appreciate the bucket recommendations generally. Also, as will come no shock to my council counterparts that if there's a steamer stem implication here in broadband, I'm going to be supportive of that. Particularly as we found out from the pandemic, it's really hard to do school when you don't have access to the internet these days. And that's really a sorely needed asset. So I'll probably be looking to hear a little bit more details on any plans and putting some ideas forward on that, Ms. Reese. So FYI, although I'm guessing you'll probably expect that from me. Questions? I'm assuming so, under the Restore General Fund cut large bucket, that, you know, we cut staff, we cut programs, we kill the cattle projects. I'm assuming all of those things are what you would anticipate hearing from us about under that Restore General Fund cut bucket? Or are we looking for anything more specific than that?
Well, if council has a specific preference or recommendation or concern, I certainly would like to hear that at some point. Staff will continue to, I guess, closer define what these $10.8 million could fund, and then. And then present to council for, you know, definitive reaction soon. But when we talk about restoring general fund cuts. You know, I'm thinking more along the lines of some of the programs that we've cut and the initiatives that, that we cut. And for this particular fiscal year, if we could find a way to support some additional staff support, that would be wonderful. Given, given some of these areas, but we also could easily use up these dollars in capital investment. So we're going to be trying to present to you a, a program that's pretty balanced.
Excellent. That's helpful.
I'll just add, Mr. McCarthy, that, you know, in, in recent days, I've been hearing from senior staff. That their workload is a bit larger than it's ever been. Pre-pandemic and that. That's something that we're going to have to take into consideration with this, with this program because they're getting worked pretty hard right now.
Well, that's, you know, trying to get a sense of this without, you know, I know we're trying to keep this high level for a more protracted discussion later. But trying to get a handle on it and as, as you pointed out, it's, we're, we're very, very busy here and that's all good. It's all good economic activity, but we're really, really busy and, and frankly, in the last handful of years, we've cut back on staff. And, and I can see some of it around the edges and. So I wanted to make sure that at least that's part of our, our thought process and clearly Ms. Reese already has that on her mind. So appreciate that direction.
Mr. Preston.
Thanks. A question presumably for Mr. Hune. Am I right to assume that there was fairly complex dynamics that were looked at in the federal government? Determining how the allocations came down. For instance, I see that our 10.8 or 10.9 million allocation is less. About over 2 million less than Urbana, who has a smaller population than us. Peoria, who obviously is a larger municipality, but they're, you know, almost four times the allocations of us. I assume it's more than just population that was looked at in determining how much each governmental body would receive.
That, that's correct. I think for the, the state and the county and the city, they use kind of different measures. But what I was reading through, they obviously use population. They use a lot of CDBG HUD analysis to show where certain low incomes were at. They use unemployment, rates of unemployment in terms of different areas. So they, and they even use some, just everyone gets the same at this level and then, and then it's unemployment levels and then the population levels and then low income levels. So they, they were quite diligent in trying to identify best they could where the need was. So I, the answer to your question is yes, it was, it wasn't overly complicated, but it seemed to speak towards the need of, in terms of unemployment. Population and, and underserved, underserved areas in the community.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Smith. You're on mute.
I'm coming back with a follow-up question because it's so unusual. But it, and Mr. Hune was presenting the parameters and talking about bonus payments to essential workers. Am I understanding correctly that the town would provide reimbursement to private employers? To be passed through to their essential workers or would this be limited to the, 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 the town's employees? Who were considered essential, receiving those essential payments if that's a, a direction we chose to go in?
That's a good question, Ms. Smith. I, I, I would, I'm guessing, and I don't know for certain. I'm not sure if Mr. Hune has specific information. I would guess it's probably from a couple of different viewpoints. From the municipal perspective, the money that's going to local government, and I guess I'm, I'm speculating on this because I haven't explored this in detail. I would expect that there's probably an option if we wanted to allocate some of those dollars toward our own employees. And then maybe from a state level, maybe the state, you know, because the state might have similar buckets. I'm, I'm not sure if the state would allocate some of their, those dollars towards programs that support small business and essential workers. But again, I'm speculating, so I'm not sure.
And, and another follow-up question. In, there's been a concern that in previous programs, the art community was not provided. Support in program dollars that were disseminated. Is there any restriction on supporting the arts with these dollars? And, and if, if not, can you speak to some examples that, that might qualify under this program?
Well, I do know that in the American Rescue Plan, there, there are a number of programs that are funded specifically through. The arts and a humanities, like the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, that will cover some. Museum needs, library needs and things like that. So for our particular Children's Discovery Museum and Normal Public Library, they might be eligible for use of some of our allocation. If we wanted to do that. Mr. Hune, do you have more information on whether or not our dollars could be used for direct assistance to? Arts programs and art organizations?
I, I think they would be available. That would probably be come under the bucket of. Our revenue loss and then taking that number and saying we can allocate this to CDM or the theater or, or some art program. That's where the money's going to flow into us for such a, such a, a, a broad category within our, our organization.
And, and this is more a comment than a question. I just want to point out to anyone listening. Who may have some skepticism about town restoring some staff positions. By way of comparison, the town of Normal has created a budget that's pretty much 130 million. For ongoing expenses and our neighbor to the south that has a population that's only 50% larger. Has nearly 100% more in their budget. So I, I, I know that the staff has been lean and mean. And they've been doing a lot with, with less and less. So I, I think it is totally reasonable to, to look at restoring some of those positions. Because the, the staffing levels have reached a pretty painful level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I, I will, a couple of things. Just to reiterate on your first question regarding arts. One of the, and Mr. Hune mentioned this as well, but one of the programs that would be on the table. Would be if we filled our budget, if we use some of these ARPA funds to fill some budgetary gaps in the general fund. One of the things that we would recommend is taking a look again at some of those programs we cut, like the Harm and Arts Grant Program. Because those funds have been very meaningful to a number of arts organizations in town. So I think there is some flexibility there. The other thing I do want to mention is, I don't want to spend too much time talking about staffing, but. I, I guess it, it is a, a good problem for us to have in terms of the economic development, the housing growth and the like. And, and we're very busy compared to how, how active things were 10 years ago. So we'll, we'll put together a strategy to address those staffing needs.
Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence.
Okay, another point I want to make and it's probably my last one. Is, you know, as I'm, as I'm kind of going through the buckets. My, my feedback, as I think this through a little bit more that I'll send to Pam, to Ms. Reese. Will be trying to find that blend between kind of thinking big, longer term versus some of the immediate needs. So kind of a long-term, short-term. And I'm also going to try to think of things that, that cut across a number of the buckets, you know. So if we can hit restoration of general fund with, you know, supporting economic growth. You know, a number of things to kind of. Get at numerous buckets. That's going to be how I approach this. And so with that in mind, one idea that comes to mind, that I think fits a couple of those categories. Is the Convention Visitor Bureau here, the Bloomington Normal Convention Visitor Bureau. That is something that a number of years ago, we did cut our, through general fund cuts. Our annual contribution to their operations. It is a big economic driver. They have not received nearly as much money from the state. Because the state's supportive area convention visitor bureaus is based on hotel motel tax largely. So that's an area that, you know, has been struggling, especially hit hard. And if we could restore some of our funding to them. And, you know, to Mr. Hune's point, allow them to do what they know how to do in terms of investing dollars in tourism. To promote the economy. I think that's maybe a, would be a really cool idea. So something to think about. I'll offer it up to my council colleagues to ponder on that idea too. That's all I have. Thank you.
I would say that that's, from my understanding of what we're doing, that's an entirely appropriate use for some of the. You know, I guess my only caution on it without getting into the weeds again is. Kind of tying that to people's comfort level of engaging in tourist activities. Again, we'll have that discussion later.
Mayor, if, if I could jump in, I was just going to remind you, Mayor, of, of our timeline and we're at 6:11. So maybe it's time to move on to our next subject with your permission.
That's what I was thinking. I was just getting ready to make that announcement. Want to introduce the Chief Leisner?
Sure, sure. Pretty much goes without introduction. There's the chief. No, I'm just, thank you, Chief Leisner. He's going to share some information with council, summarizing the, the State of Illinois Police Reform Act. What that regulation is, kind of explain it in a little more detail so we understand how it is impacting the town of Normal. And then we'll, we'll be prepared to respond to your questions. So I'll turn it over to Chief Leisner. Thanks for joining us, Chief.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you this evening. And see if I can get my screen to share here. Can, can everybody see that? Okay, excellent. Well, as Ms. Reese said, I mean, I'm really just going to go over, kind of try and give you a 30,000-foot view. Of the Criminal Justice Reform Act that's come out. Talk a little bit about how we got to where we're at today. Talk a little bit about some of the key dates and, and timeframes and what we're looking for. And then really kind of wrap up with what the agency's doing about it to, to come in compliance with that with some of the dates that are coming up here. So. It started off really as, as House Bill 3653. It was passed back in January 22nd. It was signed by Governor Pritzker on February 22nd. And once it was signed, it then became the Safety, Accountability, Fairness and Equity Today Act, Safety Act. And it's really, it's, it's kind of the 2.0 version or part two, if you will, of the Community. Police and Community Relations Improvement Act of 2015. That act brought us things like body camera, some standardization and prohibitions on, on chokeholds and, and things like that. The Safety, yeah, the Safety Act, just kind of looking at it. I mean, there's a lot to unpack here. So I'm just going to try and hit the, the high points and then leave, leave ample time for some questions. 764 pages. Everything that applies in there covers to all law enforcement throughout the state. So municipal, county, university, state police, everybody's covered under there. The, there are three agencies that really had expanded significantly under this, their authority. One was the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority. They have some expansion in their responsibilities for doing analysis on things like use of force, on in custody deaths, on coming up with some checklist. And things like that. Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, they're going to grow significantly in their responsibilities and their staffing. As well as the Attorney General's Office, the Attorney General's Office in, in, in being able to perform pattern and practice violations or investigations. Where if there's misconduct that's found to violate a constitutional right. Could result in, in monetary sanctions against the officers, individual officers. So going on here and just kind of talking a little bit about what it, what it creates and amends. It creates a statewide use of force standard act that's going to be managed by the Illinois Training and Standards Board. It creates a No Representation Without Population Act. That was one. It really just determines on how districting is done in regards to incarcerated populations. Reporting in custody death act. This really revised. And, and added on to some of the requirements for in custody deaths that happened as, back in 2015. And then Task Force on Constitutional Rights and Remedies. It's really, they'll be looking at best practices. But one of the big points to come out of that is that Task Force is also looking at qualified immunity. For police officers and they're charged with making recommendations to the legislature and the governor. And then you have the Illinois Law Enforcement Certification Review Panel, which will be under the Training and Standards Board. And they'll review all law enforcement certifications and, and requests for decertifications. It amends the criminal code in 1963 and 2012. I mean, the 1963 criminal code primarily deals with pre-trial release or the abolishment of cash bail. The, the criminal code of 2012 deals with any of the, the other changes that we might get into. That talks about modifications for providing a definition of police misconduct. Or modifying when arrests can be made, physical arrest versus citations and things like that. There's amendments to the Open Meetings Acts for some of the boards and commissions that are created as a result of this. They're not required to have their proceedings being falling under the Open Meetings Act so they can discuss personnel matters and things like that. The Freedom of Information Act has also been modified or amended to allow for the types of documents. And sharing of information done at those committees and, and board levels are not subject to the process for freedom of information. They've identified or amended the State Employee Identification Act or Indemnification Act. Unified Code of Corrections, State Police Act, and then the Illinois Police Training Act are several other things that got amended. Some of the criminal code amendments that'll go into effect July 1st. We'll just kind of hit on some of these and then there's some others that are going to be out further in, in the future. It amends the use of force and deadly force standards. There's quite a few changes in there. It, it amends circumstances when deadly force can be used. Also restricts when officers may be able to pursue, pursue individuals. It talks about prohibits certain kinds of force. So there's types of force that would be prohibited, things like use of taser in certain circumstances. Or in certain targets of the body, like in the back, as well as use of other less lethals like. Beanbag rounds and things like that at, at the head and, and other areas of the body. It creates a duty to intervene and render aid by police officers. So those situations where an officer witnesses another officer utilizing excessive force. They're required to intervene and stop that. And then also there's a host of reporting requirements that, that take place after that. Officers are also required to render aid. Those are the types, I mean, in those situations where you have somebody who's in need of medical attention. The officer in the course of their duties is required to provide that up to their training level and then certainly make arrangements and call for additional assistance in those cases. It creates a new law, a definition for law enforcement misconduct. It also has modifications to no-knock warrant service. Some things there is that it has to be reviewed by supervisors prior to. If, if there are no-knock warrants served, they have, every member serving it has to have body cameras on them. Those are just a few of the things. And then talking about modifying the, the Body Camera Act. What it does is it puts in place kind of some timetables for the mandate of body cameras from small agencies. Beginning early in January of 2022, all the way up to the largest agencies, which would have to come in compliance with that. And I believe it's January of 2025. There are also several other modifications to language for the body cameras and, and their use. And then another example of something that was modified is, is the three phone call requirement for arrestees. Anyone who is arrested is required to have three phone calls within the first three hours of custody at no charge to them. Other requirements, review of qualified immunity. I think that this is going to be probably the first casualty of some of the aggressive timelines that are set there. The, the board has to be formed and they're supposed to have a recommendation to the, the governor and the legislature by. The the board has to be formed and they're supposed to have a recommendation to the um, the governor and the legislature by July first. Uh, the board hasn't even been formed yet, nobody's been appointed, so um, that one, they may, they may look to push that date out a little bit. New reporting requirements for in custody deaths, uh, the criminal justice in Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority. Has come up with some new requirements, there's also gonna be some additional. Checklist that are that are required there as well as some some reporting on that. Uh, the Attorney General's Pattern and Practice Investigations, they will be able to initiate investigations. Into uh pattern and practice or or misconduct violations of Illinois constitutional requirements. Beginning after Ju- uh July first. There's also mental health screening for officers that's going to be uh taking place, the criminal or the uh Training and Standards Board. Is responsible for coming up with some of the minimum standards in order to look at uh officer wellness. As part of their mental mental health and and trying to address officers being on the job, being fit fit and uh but also. Trying to address some of the concerns we've had with the growing number of law enforcement suicides over the last several years. There's some prohibitions out there on certain types of military equipment, we have not taken advantage of any of the military surplus programs, so it's really not something that that applies to us. And then there's some new mandated training requirements that are in addition to the mandated training requirements that came out in twenty fifteen and. That's what this next slide is, it's it may be a little difficult to see, but this is kind of a matrix. Of the the when and the types of of training that's required both at a state level and at a federal level. And it's broken up into initial hire and then, you know, every six months and so on, all the way out to every five years. These are things that are done in addition to most of the other specialized training that we would do, so. If you've got accident investigation, if you have officers that are trained in field sobriety testing, if they're trained in uh. Breath operator alcohol or breath alcohol operator, those are all in addition to the to the mandates here. Uh, as well as some additional for uh for professional certifications like Lead Homicide Investigator and and some of those. As a result of the the Safety Act, there's some new training uh requirements that are put in place. They've added an additional thirty hours of training every three years. And they've broken it down in this this particular format, it's a minimum of twelve hours of hands-on scenario-based uh role-play training. Six hours of instruction on use of force, just general use of force and the types of force. Specific laws on the stops of searches, use of force under the Fourth Amendment. And then it talks about officer safety techniques, including cover concealment and time, that's really de-escalation is what they're getting to there. Officers' ability to talk through situations, to create time and distance to where they can give some uh additional reaction time to respond to situations. And then a minimum of six hours on high-risk traffic stops. Like the other training matrix in the slide before, there may be some training that we're currently doing that may apply for this uh or or apply towards this. I'll just give you an example, some of the scenario training, for many years, we've been doing scenario-based training. For our officers when it comes to role-play training, when it comes to use of force and 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 less lethal force. So some of that, we're hopeful, may be covered in this thirty-hour training, but again, we'll have to, as as we move past this July first. Kind of time point timeframe to kick this off, we'll get some guidance from the Training and Standards Board. On whether or not those types will, whether our program qualifies, but we're gonna make every effort to to do that because currently, you know, we do a lot. In that uh in that category. Some some additional amendments or things that are gonna be coming up, new certification and decertification provisions. Those are gonna be coming up, Training and Standards Board will have the authority to review those, there are considerations, there's two categories, one is automatic. Decertification, so certain offenses that have committed, they're outlined in the statute where if those are committed, their grounds for automatic decertification. For police officers, there are also others that are called discretionary decertification, where if they are, you know. They're not specifically defined as a as a violation in there, but I think the language they used is it's the it's unspecified conduct that is unprofessional. Or unethical conduct of the of of the profession, so it's pretty vague, but there are some times again. Where things happen that are outside of those mandates or those specific language where. We would want to take some some action and the board would want to look at that and and review the certifications. Uh, the body camera mandates, I mentioned that before, starts in January twenty twenty-two and then goes to twenty twenty-five, and that's really dependent on agency size. Anonymous complaint investigations, the Training and Standards Board will have to uh have a process in place for handling those. Beginning in January of twenty twenty-three. And then the bail reform part of it will also take place in twenty twenty-three, that's the abolishment of cash bail, pre-trial release. Citations in lieu of physical arrest for minor misdemeanor offenses, those types of things will all all kick into to uh or take effect uh in twenty twenty-three. Just giving you a little bit of a kind of what NPD's process is, once we knew that this was passed and it was signed by the governor. We took action, really, we formed a committee, um, we put our subject matter experts together. And basically tasked them with reviewing the act, going over and looking at what our policy is. Areas where it's gonna impact training and then our practices and then comparing that against the new act, so. Our goal there is to have any any changes that need to be done, modifications by July first, uh, well ahead of that. And then from there on out, educating staff on what those changes are, we have a good system in place for doing that already. As I have the clear accreditation process here that I mentioned, really, that is the the process for analyzing and and regular reviews, so we're already in that process. It provides us a good framework for making informed decisions. And I would say that, you know, we're ahead of of a lot of other agencies. Because we have this this process in place and we're always looking at best practices and how we could get better. And the part of educating staff is really, as we make these changes to our policies, we have a system in place for pushing that out. For sharing it via roll calls, officers reviewing it, asking questions, signing off on it. And so that we make sure that they've received that information and and that they're aware of the changes in advance of when they go into into effect. And talking just uh backing up a little bit, you know, about the I the accreditation process and how I said we're ahead of many other agencies, there are. There are things right now that are that are built into the act that we have already looked at and we already have in place. So I mean, some examples of that was, let me back up, even going back to twenty fifteen, when the Police and Community Relations Improvement Act came into play. They, there was bans on chokeholds at that time. We'd had chokeholds banned in our policy for many years before that, so that was something that was already in our practice, it was in our training, so we didn't have to modify anything there. As far as the new act, a couple of examples, the duty to intervene by officers experiencing or witnessing. Excessive force by another officer, we've actually gone, our policy goes above and beyond because it actually requires our staff to intervene. Uh, whether it's an officer of our agency or any other agency that they see doing that. As well, the duty to render aid, we've had that in our policy for over a year, uh, where the officers are required to provide aid up to their level of training. So again, those are just some examples of where we are probably better situated to handle some of these. These changes in the Safety Act than than other agencies are. But it doesn't come without concerns, right, because there are there are a fair amount, I mean, the the seven hundred and sixty-four pages, there are a lot of things in it that that gives some concern to staff. And you know, recruitment and and staff retention is one of our top concerns. I wish I would say, I mean, you know, I'm very proud of our organization and and how we we operate and how what our expectations are as staff, but I can tell you that. In the last month, I think we've had three resignations. One retirement, uh, and and two two other resignations, and I'm not just talking officers who have. You know, six months on the job or a year on the job, I'm talking folks that have, you know, twenty-two and twenty-three years on and it said, you know what, I I think it's time for me to retire. Including officers, I had one today that was. Unfortunately, had thirteen years on and has decided that, you know, they're they're looking to to make a change and gonna take a a position elsewhere, not in law enforcement, so. Those are the things that we're gonna have to look at, how do we, how do we continue to train and and retain this our staff? As well as recruitment, how are we gonna recruit individuals to come into the profession? Uh, we have a recruiting process right now that's going on for police officers, so if you have. Individuals that you know that you think would do well in the profession, please send them our way. We needed, we're at a time where we need our best and brightest out there, and so that's that's what we're looking for, but, you know, it it is a little bit. Concerning because I know some other agencies who've been testing over the last couple of months. Close to us and I think they've had, you know, thirty and forty people that have come in to test and these are large agencies, so. Keeping my fingers crossed, hopeful that we'll be able to, uh, you know, still continue to recruit and draw good people, but it is a concern. Another concern is some increased cost, there are some things that are built in here, uh, whether it be, you know, the the cost of additional mandated training. When we've got officers that are in training, obviously, they're not on the street, they're not, they're not doing those kind of duties. There's some cost associated with that, there's there's cost with, uh, if there were changes in the qualified immunity. Because if if that were to go away, there certainly would would increase the cost for municipalities and counties in the state. Anybody that is is. Employing police officers, they're going to have to cover them and that that cost of doing business would would go up considerably and. You know, with qualified immunity, there's a lot of misconceptions out there that that it's a way for. Law enforcement to to get out of criminal responsibilities and that's that's just simply not the case. I mean, you look at some of the recent cases that are out there of excessive force and misuse of or in misapplication of force. Those officers are 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 charged, they're indicted and they're removed from the job and qualified immunity doesn't protect those them in those types of situations and. There's a lot of other people out there that have qualified immunity, um, I mean, the. Mayor and Council, elected officials do, judges and them, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities, we we still get things wrong. Even when we've had opportunities to think about them and and look at all the information and make a and, you know, an educated decision. Let alone the times when some cases when our officers are out there on the street and they have to make. Decisions, very difficult decisions under tough circumstances with seconds sometimes to uh to analyze that, so. That's that's a concern, and then there's some of it is fear of the unknown, you know, this whole decertification process out there, what what is that gonna mean? For for an officer, um, you know, pattern and practice investigations by the Attorney General's Office. You know, it says constitutional violations, but there's a lot of ambiguous language in there. That if somebody wanted to to apply it to certain circumstances, it could. There's there's also the potential for additional criminal and civil liability, and then there's that expectation of perfection, it kind of goes back to the qualified immunity discussion or the comments. You know, there's, I mean, we're certainly mindful of it, but but, you know, it's it's hard, our staff. They can't make a mistake anymore, right, that's part of the 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 feeling and part of the concern with them is that they have to be perfect, you know, all the time. And I just want to share kind of a a couple of other things, a few examples of of some of the things that as far as the process. There's been some wording out there, some comments that I've heard where law enforcement, you know, is against this bill. And that's that's not factual, that's not the case, I think law enforcement had concerns about some of the language in the bill, there are some things in there. That that give us a lot of concern, I think if they would have gone through the traditional process for legislating. Where you sit down, you have some back and forth, there's a record, uh, a rather lengthy record typically of the the legislative process. You can really get to the intent of what these are and you can work out misunderstandings and problems or concerns ahead of time. With the bill being passed, law enforcement didn't have that opportunity to fully engage in that process, and I think that's what what concerned us. You know, mostly, but there are also some other things in there, like I'll give you an example, uh, the Body Camera Act. There was amendment or a change to the Body Camera Act that does not allow law officers to review their police reports before they author a police report. And some folks have said, well, you know, what's what, that's not not a big deal, well. You balance that against the the misconduct law that went into place. And officers, they're they're required to write a report, it can't be vague. And if there's something in that report that's not factual, they could be. Either intentionally or unintentionally by the legislator, the the letter of the law, they they could qualify for or police misconduct, and that's what's concerning people. I've told told some friends that I have in the media, you know, it would be like a reporter who's going out and who does a dozen stories in a day. Because with us, we don't just handle one call, come back in, get to write our report, go out and handle another call. Many times with the with the tempo and the speed at which we handle these cases, you know, we're dealing with multiple ones over the night and sometimes you come in at the end of the shift. To write your report, so I've told, you know, some of some of the friends in media, I said, it's like you going out and you're covering a dozen particular stories in a day. And you come in at the end, but you can't review your tape recorder, you can't look at your notes. And you've got to get the story one hundred percent right, and if there's something wrong in that story, you potentially could be held criminally negligent for that. Similar to, uh, you know, with the with the council minutes for for Ms. Honker for the for the clerk, if she had to go through multiple. Meetings, not be able to go back and review the record and then was expected to put the 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 minutes out. That would be a a almost an impossible order there, so. You know, and an example, I guess, of of where things went right, because, you know, I mean, the Illinois Chiefs and other organizations with uh police organizations in the state. Have been on board with police reform, we've said that for many years, I know Illinois Chiefs Association goes back over fifty years with different. Initiatives that they have that they have started, that they have worked with the legislature on. An example of that would be one that was added to this particular bill kind of in the eleventh hour, but it was the whole certification and decertification process. Illinois Chiefs, Illinois Sheriff's Association and other police organizations uh received the language from the Attorney General. The Attorney General's staff and him sat down with representatives from law enforcement, we worked through the through the questions that we had, we worked through some of the. The the concerns, and at the end of the day, I think it's a much better bill and what happened was law, you know, the the law enforcement organizations. Ended up supporting that that bill, so that's that's our experience with how how typically these types of bills were passed. And like I said, at the end of the day, it just provides us an opportunity to to have a better product in the end, so. Moving forward, I mean, our goal is to educate our staff is to.
I'm gonna ask you to wind it up, we're running out of time, I wanna allow some time for some council questions.
Yep, no, I appreciate it, I think, like I say, our uh our opportunity, our 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 marching orders at this point is just to. To bring all this language together, to bring our training and our practices together, to educate our staff, to keep them motivated and 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 in line with what our high expectations we have for them. And and serve in the community, so with that, I would thank you for the opportunity and I would answer any questions you might have.
We've only got time for one or two questions, um, we're kind of running out of time, so, uh, Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, um. I, my question is concerning the the no cash bail. And you mentioned um class B and C misdemeanors as examples where this would apply. Could you give some examples of what kinds of charges would fall into that category?
Yeah, I mean, I I I could certainly, they're the they're minor misdemeanors, I mean, an example of a class B misdemeanor, for example, would be like a criminal trespass to property. So not trespass to your residence, that's more of an intimate place, but, you know, trespass to property, so somebody who's. Trespassing on your, you know, in your front yard and they won't leave, or somebody who's trespassing at a at a residential store. And won't leave, those, that would be something that would be an example of a class B misdemeanor.
And and so the the individual, um, by not having to have cash bail. Could could be free to continue with their job until they report to to the court. Um, and wouldn't be in danger of a spiraling downward problem.
Yep, that's correct, yeah, there's there's uh pretty much they've removed in the in the language that I've seen, everything that refers to bail. They have, they have modified that and replaced it with pre-trial release, so and there's some caveats in there, obviously, for severity of charges. And other circumstances for safety to the public and 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 things like that.
Thank you.
I've got time for one more quick question and then we're gonna have to move on to the next event, if if anyone has one. Not seeing one, so let's move, I think we have our students in the wings, I'm seeing some names pop up that I don't recognize, so I'm guessing that's them. We have fourth graders from um. Parkland and Grove School that want to talk about uh accessible playgrounds and Ms. Reese, I'm gonna turn it over to you for introductions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, I'm pleased to introduce the the guests we have on your Zoom call this evening. We have Dr. Weichel, Unit Five Superintendent, joining us and. This item was brought to Mayor Kuss's attention and to staff's attention back in March. When we received letters from Mrs. Stanzick's fourth grade class, um, they were very thoughtful in their program and their in their class. Um, they were very thoughtful in their program and their, in their class, uh, requests. And, um, mayor, you respond with a letter and we thought their. Their ideas concerning accessible playgrounds were very important for our community and we agree with them. So. They had requested an opportunity to speak to council on this subject and I thought their, um. Their opinions should be heard from, uh, by you. And, um, so I'm going to turn this over to Unit Five, um, Dr. Weichel and Mrs. Stansik.
Perfect. Thank you so much for having our students join you tonight. I, I appreciate your thoughtfulness of engaging them. Um, and, and before I turn it over to Mrs. Stansik, I'm just going to say, you know, I'm really not surprised that our students are engaged. In civic matters and wanting to participate at the local level. Um, I think that's not only a sign of the, the students that we have, but also a tribute to the quality educators that we have. You know, encouraging, um, our students to think beyond themselves and to really think about their local and national. Um, you know, environments. So I'm going to turn it over to their teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Um, my students are extremely excited and very honored. That you would take the time to listen to them tonight. Uh, they have a little presentation that they're going to give. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to them because, uh, this is all about their request.
Um, I'm going to jump in real quick. Um, Ms. Gataraju has indicated that there's a lot of students on the call and so. Um, I'm going to ask the students who are participating to make sure that they. Turn their cameras on because I think administratively we turned them off. So if they could turn their cameras on, I see there they come. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to go ahead and, um, present our, um, thoughts and ideas to you. And Aditi will go ahead and begin for us. Can't turn her video on.
Good evening, Mayor Kuss and all of the esteemed members of the town council. My name is Aditi Chandar and I am a fourth grader at Grove Elementary and my teacher is Mrs. Stansik. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our thoughts. On how we can change the playgrounds in the town of Normal to make it more inclusive for kids with disabilities. Today, my class and I are going to present about a girl named Melody Day, whom we learned about earlier in the year. So can I present my screen?
Aditi, give me just one second. You should be able to share your screen now.
Okay.
At the bottom of the screen, there is share screen.
Yeah, one second. Um, so. Melody helped her school Heritage Elementary and the people there by raising money. The extra money could make her school playground usable for kids with disabilities.
Sharia, you can go ahead and continue. I'm not so sure her sharing is going to work right now.
Sharia is not in the meeting.
Thank you. Then Shrika, would you go ahead and continue?
When Melody Day wanted to build a playground, she had a challenge. She had CP, cerebral palsy. Which means she had trouble moving her muscles. Later on, a quote that she said, said, people in wheelchairs are not just as capable as people without wheelchairs.
She decided to make a more inclusive playground for her school. She said her, she presented her idea to her principal who loved it, but there is just one small problem. There wasn't enough money for the school to pay for it. So she decided to make her own GoFundMe page. Um, so people could donate money to her school. Two li- two years later, she did it. Um, there were four shiny instruments on her playground. Now, um, kids with disabilities and kids also without disabilities can play on the playground together.
In 1990, the Americans with disabilities, also known as the ADA, was. Can I have a second?
Certainly.
In 1990, the Americans with the Disabilities Act was signed. Before the ADA was signed. People who were on wheelchairs that wanted to get on buses and trains had to abandon their. Had to abandon buses and trains. But after the ADA was signed, peop- um, they were able to do. Um, buses and trains had rails, so people with wheelchairs were able to get on safely. We could do the same thing to playgrounds. We could change some stuff and, and make sure that. People with the disabilities and other people with no disabilities can be safe.
One day I had a sprained leg. Instead of going outside and playing with my friends and enjoying the fresh air, I had to sit. Inside and read a book. So if you could add a little bit of equipment for people with dis-
Um, I'm Sophia and, um, I want you to think about like. If you were at a school recess is supposed to be like some of the funnest times and. Then you're in a wheelchair, have a disability and, or something broken and. Um, you're at the buddy bench and no one wants to play with you because they're all out there playing. Uh, and I want you to think about how that would make you feel.
Hi, my name's Matea and when I first transferred to Parkside Elementary in second grade, I never really thought about the disabled kids much. Until I got to know them more and then I realized it's really hard being disabled. Cause you can't have more, you can't have access to things that kids without disabilities can't. Like a girl in my PE class. Before we went online, she had a teacher that had to help her walk and run and do all the activities in PE. And without the teacher, she just had to stand there and she couldn't really move by herself. And another girl named Ally, she was one of my first friends when I first transferred. She has a disability where she can't run. And she has to wear a vest during recess. So sometimes she has to stay inside and she can't go out and enjoy the sunshine. And she really can't have more access to the playground because she can't run with like. The other kids. And I think if you added more steps to the playground, so all kids have access, they won't feel more left out. And I think they could feel like they're fit in.
Oh, Ms. Stansik. I was not planning to have one, but I decided to share one.
My name is Liam and. I go to Parkside. Ever since then, the buddy bench was made. I was thinking, can we do more? After being a Melody Day. I was inspired to make the letter. Letter. So I was thinking of. Whales to get off. There's going to be a restoration deck. For all children can play. More than swinging that has the best looking scene. And simply just more fun ways for people with disabilities to move around.
Thanks Liam.
That's all I'm going to say for now.
So my name is Saipabak Vankamamadi and I'm a fourth grader in Grove. My teacher is Ms. Stansik. And today I have five different ideas for inclusive playground equipment that all kids can enjoy playing with their using. And if you could let me share a screen. That'd be nice.
Saipabak, can you try now?
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen. Oops. Five inclusive playground ideas. So this first one looks just like a normal playground. Do you see this little, little girl with a wheelchair in the corner? Looks like she's having fun. This could be the one of, one of the ways our inclusive playground could look. And you're probably guessing that most kids like to use the swing set. This swing set has support for wheelchairs so that all kids can have fun. And at the same time, stay safe under. If they're disabled, so that every kid can experience the joy of a swing set. So in this one, a teacher is helping a disabled student play on the merry-go-round. Do you notice the little girl has a wheelchair? The girl is talking to her teacher, spinning around on the merry-go-round and at the same time staying safe. A playground castle. So cool. Do you notice the little girl with the walker? The girl's walker isn't struggling to keep going because there are no wood chips or mulch in her way, just flat ground. This could be another fun and safe idea for all kids. And this is my last one. So this is something that our entire playground could look like. Here, there's something fun that everyone can do, whether they're disabled, have a broken bone. Or they're just normal kids. And thank you to Mayor Kuss and the council for listening to our presentation. And special thanks to Ms. Stansik for giving us this idea.
Is there anybody else in the fourth grade that, um, had a comment, something that they wanted to share?
Um, yeah, Ms. Stansik, sorry, I couldn't like do my part. I was like kicked out. So, yeah. At that moment. So, yeah, I'd like to say. Um, we should build these playgrounds. We, and like they, they can make a big difference in our community and, yeah.
Sharia, can we see your face on the screen? Can you lower your screen just a bit? There you go. Thank you. Shrika?
I'm just saying, uh, treating people with disabilities like they're, don't matter is looks just as bad as segregation. Cause just because they have a disability, you need to say nope to, to them coming to the park. So that looks just as bad as segregation.
Okay, I think that pretty much concludes our presentation. Um. We hope that you take this under consideration. We'd be happy to, to help in any way we could. To get this up and running.
Mayor, you're muted. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, thank you to the young students for coming and making this presentation and raising, uh, an issue that is very important to our community. Uh, we understand, uh, and, and better understand because of your presentation today, the needs we have in our community. And I can assure you. We hear it and we, we've already, uh, made some plans, uh, although sometime, some are a little bit long-term, not too long-term. To, uh, get inclusive playground, playgrounds in our community. Um, so, um. You've just reinforced the importance of doing that in our community. I was specifically encouraged, uh, by the exciting plan. Uh, that was presented for Colleen Who's School for, for a very innovative program. Uh, of, of outdoor play that accommodates everyone in our community. And that's just a, amazing. Uh, any other council members, a quick comment before we break? Mr. Nord?
Um, thank you for coming and speaking to the council. Um, what I see is this is fantastic. Um, you know, all of you have come together and you're, uh. I know a lot of kids. I've got kids. My kids are more about themselves, or they were at the same. I didn't hear anybody speaking about themselves. It was all about other people. So that touches my heart. Thank you. Um. Excuse me. And Unit Five, thank you for inselling this on our kids. I'm a product of Unit Five. My kids will be, and thank you.
Um, we've got, the entire council wants to comment, so I'd ask you to keep it brief, uh, so we can get onto our meeting. Uh, next up would be Kathleen Lorenz.
I just had a quick question. If I could get a quick answer because it sounds so interesting. What's a buddy bench? Let's answer.
A buddy bench is basically like, um, they're on the playground. Liam, you're, you're really glitchy.
Yeah, I think I took over Liam because.
Yeah. So a buddy bench is basically like at the playground. It's where all those kids. Liam, can you leave and join? Your audio is really glitchy.
Yeah.
So like a buddy bench is basically on the playground where kids who, um. Aren't like, um, playing have, um, they sit there and.
I just got my internet unstable.
So, yeah, that's like a, it's where, um, kids sit there and then if, um, if they're feeling lonely or anything like that, some kids come by and then play with them.
Okay. So like if I need a buddy, I go sit on the buddy bench.
Yeah, that's why it's called the buddy bench.
I like it. Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Yeah.
Thanks, mayor. Um, I was just going to say that, uh, that man, I mean, look at, uh, look at you guys and look at your class and. I, I am, I am so impressed and I wish that when I was your age and when I was in fourth grade, that. Uh, I was doing what you guys are doing and, um. Thank you for coming and for sharing with us. Uh, thank you for telling us about why it matters and why it's, you know, matters for everybody at your school and. Uh, you know, and all the schools and all the kids in our community. Uh, I am so impressed by you guys and I. So badly, uh, want to help you however I can, um, to make sure that we can get this project done. I hope that, uh. Uh, I hope that you understand that it takes a little time. So you probably will not be in Mrs. Stans's, uh, fourth grade class by the time it gets done. So you probably will not be in Mrs. Stanza's, uh, fourth grade class by the time it gets done. But I promise you that I will do whatever I can to, uh, help further your cause. Because I just believe in what you guys are doing. And, uh, Mrs. Stanza, uh, thank you so much for bringing these talented and articulate and passionate, you know, young people, not only, uh, to this meeting tonight, but thank you for helping to further develop them. Um, and, uh, to the betterment of our entire community and society. Way to go, guys.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I won't take long there. Just, uh, want to echo some of the comments, uh, Ms. Stansik. Thank you for getting, uh, uh, young people involved in our community. It's very rare for us to see, uh, young people on our screens or in our council chambers to address us kids. Stay engaged, fantastic job. I'm sure you hear it, uh, you're the future of our community. And if this is any indication, uh, we're going to be in really good hands. But, uh, rest assured, as, uh, Mr. Preston pointed out, please be patient. Uh, government works slowly at times, but, uh, but I, I'm also a big fan of which you're, of, uh, which come to talk to us about. And, uh, I'll do whatever I can to support, uh, this type of initiative moving forward. Thank you very much and keep at it.
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you. I just feel like it's very important that, um, we certainly commend all of you for your thoughtful words this evening and sharing with us on such a very important, um, topic. And, you know, it's such a great honor, um, to have you all here because you are who comes behind us. For me, I don't look to sit here forever, but I know that it will be a pleasure having any of you take this seat. Because I know you'll consider everyone in our community, just as you are right now.
And Ms. Smith?
I, I want to thank all of the students for coming and being so articulate. And I want to, I want to personally thank Unit Five and the school system and the teachers because it is truly a welcoming school system. I had trepidations when our daughter was in middle school. And they were not realized because the, the people of this community, the students and the parents have made such a welcoming home to anyone who is, um, different. And it makes such a difference to be accepted like that. So thank you for, for you and thank you to your parents for raising such wonderful kids.
Thank you all. It was a great presentation and we're going to take about a five-minute break and go into our council meeting. Thank you.
For the opportunity and the kind words.
Well, uh, before we leave.
See Mom, Ms. Stansik?
Si's got one question. He's been, it's been burning, so let's.
Oh, it was like a comment, but this is like really important during COVID because only like a few kids are coming to the, all the playgrounds because, um, they don't want to get sick and all that. So, um, like those few kids will see that they can't go into the playgrounds like that. So I, I also was about to say that.
Thank you, Si. Full break for five.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, bye.
Bye. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
They say that every day, every day, when goodbye.
Thank you for having us.
For council's awareness, some of you may have, you don't need to get off your Zoom. You could just, um, turn off your cameras and mute yourself and then come back on in a couple moments. Thank you, Mrs. Stansik.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
Twenty-one, please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Nord.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, the governor has issued a disaster declaration relating to public health concerns caused by the statewide COVID-19 pandemic. As mayor, I've determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because the risk risk of exposure to the COVID-19 virus stemming from indoor gatherings, and that the remote meeting is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the council staff and the general public. We have no public comment tonight, so we'll move, at least at this point, move to the omnibus agenda items considered routine and will be handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Norb.
I'd like to pull item B and D.
Thank you. Motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Items considered on the omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the council for May 3, 2021, a resolution waiving the formal bid process and authorizing the purchase of refuse containers from Schaefer Systems International, and that's in the amount of $27,560.50. A resolution authorizing the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for traffic management, or I'm sorry, traffic signal maintenance and energy costs. A resolution approving a professional services agreement with the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association for fire lieutenant promotional examination services, and a resolution conditionally approving the Meyer Jiffy Lube Normal Subdivision final plat by expedited process. That's at 1990 East College Avenue. Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy.
Hi.
Ms. Cummings.
Hi.
Mr. Nord.
Hi.
Ms. Smith.
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Hi.
Mr. Preston.
Hi.
Mayor Kuss.
Hi. Two items that were pulled. The first is the item B, a report to receive and file town normal expenditures for payment as of May 12, 2021. Mr. Nord.
I assume moved.
Second.
Mr. Nord.
Um, the reason I pulled it is because I was gonna vote against it because there's more underpass funding in this, and we still have not had a vote to increase, and we are still unable to report how much staff time has been spent in the past whatever period on this project. Thank you.
Further discussion on the item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings.
Hi.
Mr. Nord.
No.
Ms. Smith.
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Hi.
Mr. Preston.
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy.
Hi.
Mayor Kuss.
Uh, the motion is approved. Item D is a resolution authorizing the renewal. I'm sorry, yeah, the renewal of the town's participation in the municipal insurance cooperative agency referred to as MICA insurance program for the plan year 2021, 2022, and authorization of the related budget adjustment. Mr. Nord.
I assume moved.
Second.
You, Mr. Nord.
Um, before the council meeting, I had emailed everyone kind of my thoughts on this, and before I spoke, I'd like to hear what everybody thought.
Mr. Nord, I don't know what time you sent that, but I did not see your email.
Did anybody receive my email?
You're on mute, Ms. Lorenz.
Is...
Uh, Mr. Nord, I think in, we're getting into a process where we're in an event, and I'm gonna suggest that you just hit the high points of your concerns.
Sure. This is a contract. It's a $2 million contract, and it was not bid out. It's not a small dollar amount. It's a 13.26% increase from last year. The procurement policy states that contracts over $25,000 are supposed to be bid. Town staff aren't even asking us to waive the procurement policy as a vote that we did earlier tonight. So that I'm not in agreement with. Another is, this is not a single-source provider. Per the write-up, only 22 public entities in Illinois use this company, and there are 1,298 municipalities in Illinois, so there are other options. Um, I did some research, and I found that Canton, Illinois had bid this service out. And this is simply just insurance brokerage services. And they bid this out, and they included the company that staff wants us to use. They also had, uh, oh, and this company was the highest bidder. There were two other companies that were on there. One was a company that the Illinois Municipal League has set up, that I think it said it had like 600 customers, and then they also used their local insurance broker. So they did have three choices, and again, the other two choices were lower than the option that staff brought to us. Their town attorney in Canton even said that if they use their local insurance broker, that the money would stay local. So sure enough, Canton did bid it out, and they saved their taxpayers' money. So, you know, I've repeatedly asked to follow the procurement policy and bid stuff out when possible. This is another contract where that did not happen. So we don't know if this is the best value, you know, and staff haven't presented any data showing that this option is the best value. So I disagree with approving another contract solely based on because that's who we've been using in the past. It's just perpetuating a culture that I disagree with. We should bid it out. This is a lot of money. This isn't just a minor amount. So I just don't see how this is in the best interest of taxpayers because nothing's been presented. You know, obviously, this is in the best interest of this one bidder who didn't have to compete. There is no free market here, and, you know, in this case, government regulators are picking the winner. So for this reason, I don't support this, uh, contract.
Ms. Reese or staff, do you wanna...
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Mayor. You know, Mr. Nord, your comments that you repeatedly asked for staff to follow the procurement policy, we've, we've talked about the procurement policy many, many times in the last two years. In this particular instance, the, the, what we're talking about is risk management coverage. So it's work comp, it's auto, it's liability and property insurance, and it wasn't bid out by the town normal. It was bid out by MICA. So it has been bid. The town is a member of MICA. So certainly I've got Mr. Hune and Mr. Day on the call, and they can respond to your inquiry on, on, on the particular process, and certainly we can discuss Canton. Canton, what you're referring to is something that Canton did in 2017. I can't specifically address why they made the call and what they bid out and, and, but Mr. Hune has more information on that if council wants to know how we would compare to Canton. In this particular instance, what the action item is, is asking council to authorize our membership renewal with MICA and, and what they've bid out in terms of our share of premiums for 2021, 22 coverage in our risk management program. We, as, as Mr. Nord indicated, this particular year, the proposed premiums for the, our coverages are 13.2% higher than last year. It is slightly over our budget amount at, um, what is being proposed as 1.84 million, not quite the 2 million Mr. Nord referenced, but 1.84 million. And I, I will remind council that when this was approved a year ago, last year's insurance was 0.9%. So there are years when we have good pricing and years when we have not quite as good pricing, and this particular pricing reflects claims experience, and like most insurers, claims experience is looked at over a period of, of years, not just one bad year. So, um, I see Mr. Day has turned his camera on, so he might have some reference about whether or not this particular process follows our procurement policy. I believe it does. So I guess, I guess that's all I have to add.
Mrs. Reese is correct. This, uh, does not in any way violate the town's procurement policy. Uh, MICA itself is a membership-based self-insurance pool, uh, which is used for the joint purchasing of insurance coverage. We've been members for a number of years. Council decided at one point in the past to become a member of MICA, and this is simply our annual membership with that, so it wouldn't be something that we would bid out. So unless council wants to leave MICA and find other insurance options, in which case we'd look at other procurement practices, but in this case, because MICA is our membership, a membership-based pool, we're members of the pool. This falls within our joint purchasing exemptions. And as Ms. Reese said, this was, everything in the underlying, all the underlying coverage was bid out. MICA bids out the insurance policies. They bid out the broker. They bid out the third-party administrator that works with it. So it does go through a rigorous procurement practice.
Oh, Mr. Hune, do you have anything that you'd like to say before I go to council? Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Bear with me one second. I'm having some technical issues. Here we go. Okay. So in terms of seeing, um, your email that was clocked in at around 11, I had sent some emails out late Sunday night to, to staff asking for some clarification, and I was waiting on that to have more information. And in response to my question, because I did a yikes when I saw the dollar amount, and I do recall the, the discussion that this premium deals with general liability, automotive liability, property, workers' comp, tax interruption, boiler and machinery, errors and omissions, public officials liability, employee benefits liability, criminal acts and cyber liability. So it, it is a rather extensive list of coverages that are included in this premium. And the response I got was pointing out that, uh, normal does self-fund. Is, is that an accurate statement? Did I understand the response correctly, Ms. Reese?
That is true. We are a self-insured, um, liability program, a risk management program, and, and we try to cushion the impact of that by being in a pool. So yes, we are self-funded.
So if, if, if we were to, um, discontinue being self-funded, it may make more sense to, um, solicit bids from brokers for the various parts of coverage. But, but we've had experience with, um, absorbing some of the risk and, and insuring above acceptable limits, and that's been the practice, and that is what this participation allows us to do. Is that an accurate statement as well?
Yes, it is. I, I don't know of, um, any communities around our size or any kind of peer communities that would be fully funded in terms of just buying insurance. I think most are self-funded. But I would have to defer to Mr. Hune on that one.
Okay, um, that, that's all I had. I, I, it, it is unfortunate that the prices have jumped, um, but workman's comp, I understand, is one of the, the more costly of the coverages. Do you have any ranking for, um, highest cost, um, that we are incurring i- in those categories to the, the least frequent claims experience?
Uh, yes, I think we do. I don't have it at my fingertips. I believe the work comp program is the priciest. Mr. Hune, I'm seeing him nod, so.
Yeah, I would, I would just add, um, we're, MICA is a self-funded plan that purchases excess insurance at a certain point. So we fund to a certain level of the claim, and at a certain level, an excess insurance carrier takes over. So it's kind of a hybrid. You're either fully insured through an individual insurance company, or you're, um, fully self-insured through your own claim pain, or you're doing some kind of a hybrid. And, and that's the balance we strike within the pool itself, and also self-insurance to a certain point, and then at a certain point, the insurance carrier takes over.
And is there a, a, an expansive list of programs that allow this model that we follow? Or are most brokers more accustomed to selling policies where they're, the deductible in essence is the only self-insurance that takes place?
Correct. Well, I guess, um, as I've got, uh, uh, government our size are typically in a pool because, uh, it helps absorb a lot of the cost. You have a lot of, uh, a market to bring to the carriers to negotiate good rates, and it keeps the swings, uh, reasonable in terms of your pricing per year. You, you almost never want to be on your own in the insurance market, particularly in this market last few years. There are good reasons to do that, but typically, uh, the law, in the long run, over many, many years, your, your cost of insurance and claims is significantly managed well in a pool process than on your own or through a complete self, uh, complete, fully funded. And then that's the balance we're trying to strike here. So I, I think to your question, the deductible is, is, is part of that process in terms of your self-funding, and the town does pay a deductible per occurrence on top of our premium. Uh, we can buy different deductibles at different levels, and we analyze that too. Uh, but we're, we're always best off looking at a pool. If, if the town wants to end our participation with MICA, there are certain provisions to give notice to that plan in a per-agreement, and then we could pursue other avenues, which would be self-funded, fully funded, a different pool. Uh, all kinds of providers are available, but they all have their pluses and minuses depending on what the value is. And, and I can say hands down, long-term insurance costs are best managed in a pool of some sort.
And, and one of the reasons for that, if I'm, if I understand it, is that in the pool, it's not just our own experience as a town that rates us for the premium. It, it is in fact, um, averaged with the other participants in the pool, so that if we have, um, partners in this cooperative, um, that are managing their risk as well as we hope we are, that can drive down the, the premium expense?
Correct. You know, that we have kind of a, a community of sort to talk to in terms of indexes and, and different safety plans, different training, and what are you doing? What are we doing? Uh, and, and we, we bring to market a more sizable organization where bigger insurance companies are willing to give us better rates because they have such a competitive, we have such a competitive edge of, of people involved in the plan. And we don't bring people into the pool unless they have good cost experience and, and good lot, loss control. Uh, so those are all issues. Insurance, as you can, can imagine, is a very large issue, particularly at this level of organization. So, but it's, it's always worth looking at, but this, we feel comfortable with, with the, the recommendation as is. It, it is hard and typical. I went back and looked at some of the previous years, and we've actually had decreases in several years in, in the past because of our pool management. This year, it, this last couple of years have been a bit tough on the industry itself because of the Me Too movement, you know, police shootings, a lot of, a lot of malicious people giving millions and millions in rewards in terms of, in terms of court settlements, and that's driven up insurance costs across the board. Uh, we, we mitigate a lot of that by being in a pool, but there are other options available, which we can certainly pursue if the council feels that's appropriate.
And I could, I'm sorry to jump in. I was gonna indicate at one point, um, the town did actually receive a rebate a number of years ago, a significant rebate. So, um, we have had good experiences on occasion, for sure.
So just...
I'm sorry, we'll also share in terms that the rebate, now the plan actually builds up a small equity balance for each member in good years, and, and the town actually has a, a, a fair amount of cash in that equity balance that we can use to offset premium increases and so forth. We haven't touched it yet, so I kinda wanna let it build a little bit. But when you have a large plan like this, uh, all the equity, all the surplus goes back to the members, either through a rebate, as, as, as Ms. Reese mentioned, or a growth in your equity balance that you can use at a future time.
So just, just to sum up, so by participating in this pool, we're gaining the advantage of a group policy as opposed to individual coverage. Uh, would that be a fair analogy?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Okay, that's all I had.
Mr. McCarthy.
One of the benefits of waiting is most of your questions get answered. It's your patience. I'll, uh, uh, but I do wanna, uh, kind of pull the lens back up out of the details a, a little bit, and Ms. Reese or Mr. Hune maybe perhaps can, can steer me, uh, uh, if memory serves, from, uh, years of this conversation, uh, that, uh, you know, in a risk pool situation, which you've shared is, is beneficial and intelligent and, and good, good fiscal management, Mr. Hune. But it's also in risk pooling, it's important, if I remember correctly, that we are in a pool with similar profile organizations to ours. Is that, am I remembering that, size, claims experience, types of, of risk? Is that accurate?
Yes, that, that's accurate. Uh, several cities are size or in, and smaller. There are water districts and so forth, but we do have a, a, a large group that, that deals with the same issues we deal with, and our, and our third-party administrator, our adjusters, get the, get the, um, experience of all their claim activity to judge where settlements might land, where, where judgments might be, where negotiation is available. So there, there are, there are, but those ancillary benefits really add a great deal of value to, to the pools. And I'm not necessarily, you know, justifying one against the other, but our experience, and, and it is, it is tough, you know, doubt about it in terms of, of the increase. Uh, I hate to think what our increase would be if we were on our own dealing with insurance i- in this year, but it's hard to say. Uh, but yeah, that, that's accurate.
So, so it's important that we, we get in a, a good, whatever that means, favorable risk pool of, of groups that look like us and manage well, and, and MICA in the up and down of, of the discussion of some years rebate, some years tough. You guys have all touched on the, uh, pandemic, social unrest, uh, workers' comp claims that are all universally across the nation costing municipalities more money. And I don't, you know, in a, in a quick tiptoe across the country in this topic, it's pretty easy to see that everybody's going up. There's nobody going down, at least that I could find tiptoeing through this. It's also important to, for anybody who's watching in, uh, in the public in this conversation is that, you know, what, what, uh, Canton was used as an example, a community quarter our size who doesn't have the risk that we do, doesn't have the services that we do, doesn't have the liability that we do in many, in, in some instances. But, but some they do, you know, may not be appropriate for our pool, and, and what they choose, we may not be appropriate for their pool. And so it really is about similarities and, and the appropriateness of, of the pool. But, uh, for, for this, for this issue that, uh, we're addressing tonight, uh, I'm favorable, uh, in supporting it. Particularly, uh, the issue about bidding out, understanding that, uh, there's really kind of two issues tonight, the insurance cost, what we're actually gonna pay for that portion, and then, you know, the, the membership in MICA, as I understand it. Am I understanding that correctly? We're gonna do two things tonight?
Uh, we're doing it in one action, but that's the, that's the, that's basically the overall impact of council's action tonight.
Okay, and so, uh, uh, I'm, I'm happy, and, uh, memory serves from previous discussions, we've had this conversation before about uh, MICA doing the bidding on our behalf, on all of the member, uh, behalf, and, uh, that they're out there trying to get the best, uh, uh, cost for us, and, uh, so I'm supportive. Thank you.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Yes, thank you. Um, to the communication from Councilmember Nord, um, I actually first became aware of the email because I was informed by, um, a person affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce that, um, our colleague, Mr. Nord, has, had reached out to the chamber, um, the director, the chair, and, um, a member of the, their political action committee to, um, express his concern about this item. So, um, I, I heard from one of those members and who asked for some clarification, and we had a good discussion. And so, you know, these are kind of policy issues, or this is a policy issue. This is a good example of, um, I think, a conversation that should happen, um, particularly on something like this. I don't think we can... Our time is limited here because we don't wanna have any interruption of service. And so the concerns raised, you know, may or may not be valid, but, um, I, I think they have more to do with Mr. Nord's overarching concern about pure procurement policy, um, and that's a big issue. And, um, so I don't really think that, as we've now since described, this really isn't a procurement policy because procurement practices were followed. Um, so I think there might have been a misunderstanding, and, um, you know, this is something that, um, in hindsight, you know, I guess I wished maybe Mr. Nord had called me or called any one of us directly as opposed to, you know, calling the chamber and then the chamber calling me. You know, that seemed a little inefficient. Um, so, you know, I just wanna underscore the importance that us on council that we feel welcome to call one another. You know, if you've got a concern, wanna kick around an idea, number one, and number two, I think we should really just set this particular concern aside because I don't think it is part of the procurement policy concerns, but at some point, let us discuss those procurement policy concerns perhaps at a, at a future work session. So with that, I'd really like to just redirect the conversation to whether or not we want to renew this membership, um, at this point for continuation of services. Thanks.
Mr. Nord.
First, um, to respond to this, following the procurement policy, because this contractor, this, uh, brokerage bid something out. That's kinda like saying that anybody that does work for the town, we can select them, and as long as they bid out their subs, that it follows our procurement policy. Well, anybody that does work for the town, there's no requirement that they have to go with low cost, that they have to open it up. They could, they can hand-select. So it's, you know, very, very different. So I will, we'll push back on the claim that because a sub bid something out, that it matches our procurement policy. And then to this particular one, um, for, for, for the example that I brought forward of Canton, that was not to show that Canton was like an equal-sized town. It was to show that this service can be bid out. It's possible. Um, you know, this is brokerage services, and just as Mr. Hune had said, there are other options, you know, and to be in a pool, the Illinois Municipal League, if we need to be in a pool of, a big pool, theirs, I think, was 600 folks in it, and I don't know anything about it other than what I read online. Um, so it's just there are options. And to Mr. McCarthy, who said that this was a, uh, good cost to the taxpayer, You know, it may be true, but I've seen no basis presented to show that this is a good cost to the taxpayer. So, you know, I guess I'm not going to push this issue further. I'm just going to vote it, but I wanted to get that out there. Oh, and as far as contacting the chamber, I have had discussions with the chamber because, you know, they should be involved in knowing what's going on with procurement policy and, you know, involving our local businesses because we do have insurance brokers, many in the city of Wilmington and Normal, you know, that are big. I'm not sure if you guys realize how big some of them are, like some of the world's largest ones in specialty areas. So, you know, they should be aware and they should have the opportunity. If we're going to bid it out, Canton bid it out and, you know, their local insurance broker was able to put a package together. I don't know if folks on the council have ever put big insurance package together where you're doing something unique and you've got to pull all these different pieces in. You know, that's what a broker does for you. You know, we're a town staff of 600 folks. There's lots of companies in Illinois that are bigger, so it's not unique what we're doing. And again, 1,298 municipalities, the option we're going with is a pool of 22 and not all of them are towns. But thank you for your time.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yeah, just to redirect, I don't think I said it was a good cost to the taxpayer. I said that we're a good pool. A good risk pool is is what I said to to be accurate and and not misperfease. I'm wondering if Mr. Day would mind coming back on. And I'm not quite sure what was quoted was actually what he said about why we filed procurement policy. Mr. Day, did you want to reenlighten us on that? Because I'm not sure that that's what was accurately stated.
Sure. No, I said that there's no violation of the policy because this is not the type of contract that we would would fall under the procurement policy. This is a membership organization. It's like paying our dues to the Illinois Municipal League when that comes up, except it's significantly larger. But it's not the kind of contract. It's not a an insurance contract. This is just a payment to a membership organization that we belong to, that the council long ago decided that the town was a member of. So it's this is not an insurance brokerage contract.
And I'd like to add to that, just having dealt with this over the years, that this is not a passive membership. The members of of that insurance pool are very active in the decision making. Is that wouldn't that be accurate, Mr. Ian? And I think you were a treasurer of that organization at one point, weren't you?
I I actually still am. The town's been very involved in Mica as well as our counterparts across the other cities that participate. And your comments about participation are very accurate. We we meet at least three times a year as a board and executive committee. We get direction from our risk consultants, our TPA, our our safety folks. So there's a lot going on and the fact that we're part of that process intimately helps helps with a lot of things in terms of that, in terms of our Mica experience.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Lorenz, you got one more, one more bite?
I do. Thank you. So, you know, if I had to wrap up, what I think I'm hearing is that this is a membership question. The membership has been working for us because we have seen over the years even some rebates and some much, much smaller increases, if not even decreases. We're seeing a spike this year, but it's still something that through the active membership of the parties that feel like it is a a good solution. So I guess I would want to underscore, you know, if this is still a workable solution, let's not go looking for a problem. And let's not conflate this with any concerns with procurement policy because it's just not relevant. Thanks.
Ms. Smith.
Just a follow up question about the size of the membership with 22 bodies participating. Is is Mica selective in who it allows to join the organization?
Very, very selective. If we have a group that city that wants to join, we don't really market ourselves per se because we want to make sure we have a good membership. I don't want to call it a boutique pool. That would be inaccurate. But if we do have a a city or or as it comes for us, and we want they want to join Mica, then we do a significant analysis of their losses over the last few years. Sometimes when sometimes when you're moving around, you're you're trying to find a a solution to perhaps a bad loss area. So we 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 look at that and we and many get rejected. You know, we say, no, we're not, or we're we'll admit you. But here's the price tag because of your loss experience and it's too much for them to absorb because they just their 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 losses are too much for us to take on. So we try to keep strong members in there. Weak members get corrected through training and loss control measures. And we don't bring on weak members unless they can guarantee, you know, some some processes in place to become stronger members in terms of low claim experience. That's that's along with your question, but yes, there's quite an analysis that gets done by by our risk pool people and our appraisal people to to consider if it's a good fit or not for for Mica.
And and your role as treasurer is allowing participation in the governance of the body. It's it's not in any way, any indication of of self dealing, because I can hear some wheels turning. And I just wanted to to make sure that that point is made, that that this could the governance is by the membership to to make sure that all of the parties are are actually satisfying, in essence, some underwriting conditions before they're allowed to join the pool, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay, that's the point I wanted to bring out there. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord.
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. That concludes our omnibus. We have no general orders or new business. We do have two public commenters. The first would be John Weaver. And do we have Mr. Weaver? Yes, we do. So again, I'll just go over the rules very briefly. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to make a comment. Mr. Weaver, whenever you're ready. Mr. Weaver, you're still muted. You're still muted.
All right, working now?
I'm fine now. Thank you.
All right, the 2021 normal election was a textbook example of the need for term limits. The mayor, after being in office for 20 years, is able with taxpayer funds to elist PAC dollars from the construction unions. Published election funds for this first quarter show over 29,000 yen bucks to Mr. Kuss's campaign. It was illustrated that voters that cared enough to go to the poll to vote were outvoted by mail in ballots. I have complete trust in our local vote counting, but this shows a different political cast of the mail in voters. I'm a conservative in spending. I believe government spending should be strictly limited to functions granted by the Constitution at all levels. It is wrong that the spending not paid by this administration's term is passed to future administrations. How will they pay? You choose to keep raising taxes in lieu of controlling spending. State, local, national debt could bring our country to a complete failure. America needs to return to page you go as the town of Normal once was. The current administration has placed a terrible debt burden on future citizens, promoting plans for future projects that are unnecessary. This may explain the construction union $29,000 investment in Mayor Kuss. The mayor pronounced that his spending was validated by the voters. I submit that union dollars bought the votes to overwhelm the 47.5% of the citizens that may desire more conservative spending. I've watched the council videos of various members berating Councilmember Nord. I stand and state that 53% of voters in 2019 chose Mr. Nord as their representative from a field of nine. Mayor Kuss earned 53% with only one other choice. Councilmember Nord was chosen by the voters and has earned standing before this council. This council and administration should always realize that 47% of the votes have said no to your direction. Having lived and operated business in Normal for over 70 years, I find the tax increases overwhelming. I've been forced to pay over $72,000 in stormwater taxes alone. University, school, and churches pay this tax and this burden passes to the citizens as well. I submit the debt passed down by this administration, the future administrate generations will be indentured tax slaves. Thank you.
And our second speaker is the Honorable Jim Soltner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you and your administration and your council for allowing me to speak this evening. It's not very often that we have members of other councils speak with each other. And so I it's an honor to talk to you tonight. I'm disappointed in the process that occurred dealing with the recycling drop box program and the agreement that was passed by the McLean County Board earlier this month. I believe the 30% contribution is well over the participation by county citizens, especially out in the rural parts of the county. Many villages have their own recycling programs and charge their residents to an additional fee to their garbage bills for that program. Although I will agree that there are members of the county that do use the drop boxes in Normal, so we should pay something. But I was mostly disturbed by a threat to end the program for everyone if the county didn't participate to the 30% amount. It was it it just bothered me, you know, we're supposed to, you know, we all try to work together. We all are are trying to be good neighbors and do things together and it bothered me. And then what disturbed me even more than that was the threat to revisit the shared sales tax program, other governmental agreements that we have. And again, to me, that's not that's not the way we should work together. So I end up voting to support the agreement because I didn't want to be one of those people that would be blamed to see, you know, seeing the program end altogether. But again, I hope in the future we can try and work a little little better together and try and make things go good for the county. So I appreciate the time to speak and you guys have a good evening.
Before taking a motion for adjournment, excuse me, are there concerns or comments? Ms. Cummings?
Yes, I just wanted to bring to at least to the public attention that there was great success with our PCs for People event that took place and the overwhelming response. So lots of people had access to computers and hotspots. And that's, you know, something that says a lot in we may have to consider, I guess, doing it again because of the response we had. So thank you for those who participated. Thank you to the businesses who made sure that we had equipment and hopefully those who received equipment that day was was able to get what they needed for future usage in the community.
Mr. Nord.
Thank you. I'm sure everybody's been paying attention to the redistricting conversation that the county has been having. That brought up kind of something that we see here on the council. The conversation at the county level was they wanted folks to be closer to their representatives. They wanted areas defined so they know who their representative is. And there is a built in accountability. Well, here in Normal, we are at large. There's no accountability that anybody knows which council member represents their particular area. So, you know, folks will email the entire council as a whole and just kind of waiting to see who responds, which, you know, if no one responds, then people get frustrated and they don't know who actually they should reach out to. I believe I know where most of everybody, most folks live, and we live essentially between Tabanda Avenue and Main Street. So there's no one representing anybody to the far east or to the west of Main Street. And, you know, western Main Street, we've got lots of bad roads as for, you know, water issues and things like that are and you know, I don't think that we're going to solve this tonight, but I wanted to point out that all the reasons that folks were saying that they wanted the county to have more districts was for representation, better representation. And, you know, we should look at that and realize that our represent that that there is no accountability here in Normal for citizens. Another topic I just wanted to ask, the speaker mentioned there were threats made to the county. I'd like to ask Mr. Reese to kind of present something to council, maybe email us later if you could find out what that is. So we kind of know because that disturbs me. Who would have made threats and what is this about? Because that's not something that, you know, me personally, I would support, you know, Normal speaking with any municipality or body that we do business with and you know, kind of threat, you have to do this or that. Thank you and good night.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. And I I want to reach out to both of the gentlemen who chose to speak tonight and and really address, I think, what's really a foundational issue that they share in common. And I've seen this expressed in a column recently where someone pointed out a recent poll asked individuals, do you think government should do more or less? And the answers currently are weighted towards support for governing, doing more than it has traditionally done. And and in some areas that is in contrast to individuals who strongly believe that there is a limit to how much government should do. But I want to point out that there is a constant tension between these two points of view. And the pendulum does tend to swing back and forth between the two, but we currently are at a state where the parties that are in support of government doing more are holding sway. And that is, of course, providing tension to individuals who who disagree with that. And Normal is unlike other areas in our municipality where we are all, in essence, at large members. And so in order to attain a seat, it's more common to have moderate positions represented because it is less likely that someone with opinions and support to to the right or left of that moderate middle will achieve the amount of support they need to gain a seat. will achieve the amount of support they need to gain a seat, um, with majority vote. So it, we are in a position that we Mr. Nord interprets it as we don't have a constituency that we represent. I interpret it as we have a unique responsibility to make sure we listen to all voices but recognize that we we have less possibility of the animosity that is so rampant at the federal level and in some cases the state level when partisanship is winning out over good governance. And so I would just urge people to understand that that there are forces at work that are contributing to our current tensions. Um, but I I urge anyone that has concerns about the council, about the town of Normal to reach out to us. We are here to represent you, but we need to hear what it is that you want, but recognize that in order to be governed well, compromise have to be take take place. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. Um, kind of in reverse order, and I'll eventually get to what I wanted to talk about. I agree with Ms. Smith's perspective on this. Um, we've just gone through our election cycle and having this conversation a few times. Um, uh, there's pros and cons to all types of systems. Um, one of the, uh, many pros to the system that we have is in fact that we have six people that are focused on the entire community and not provincial fiefdoms that can happen and be very divisive that we see in a in a national and the state, uh, politic. And is much more subject to political divisiveness rather than good governance, as Ms. Smith, uh, pointed out. Um, uh, Mr. Nord, I'm going to push back on your request, Ms. Reese, to do legwork. Mr. Soltner made the accusation as an elected official who's been very supportive of collaboration with other boards. I'd ask you to go ahead and reach right back out to him directly. Uh, if you want to know about accusations that he's referring to, just go ahead and ask him directly yourself rather than task Ms. Reese with that work. Uh, Mr. Soltner, if you're still watching and paying attention, please reach out to me. Uh, okay, to discuss any intergovernmental agreements that you have any concerns over. I haven't heard any threats. Um, but for the general public who's watching, um, you know, the town of Normal was bearing the cost of this community-wide program that was being used by residents of Bloomington and the county. Um, and so without community participation and growing pressure from certain council members uh, here that, uh, that that program get discontinued or defunded, um, that, uh, uh, it's quite reasonable and responsible for the town of Normal if we don't get community participation yet. Uh, and in funding the program that we in fact look at alternatives or or canceling the program if we can't get our community partners to participate with. Uh, that's the responsible thing to do for our taxpayers, I believe. Um, before I get off, I just want to remind everybody that's watching, council members and everybody, is that it is Bloomington Normal Restaurant Week and is underway. And what's going on is a program put on by the CDB. Well, it's by all of our restaurants, but championed by the Convention and Visitor Bureau. Uh, it's a promotion to get out and get in our restaurants. There's prizes. Take pictures of of you and your food at our local, uh, restaurants in the community. Post them online. You have the opportunity for prizes and and to give a little love to our hospitality industry that, as we all know, is suffering, uh, most heartily during, uh, pandemic. So please get out and participate in it. Uh, it's a good cause and, uh, got a chance for some prizes. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Um, I wasn't really planning on having, sharing a concern, but, um, I I will respond to Mr. Soltner's comments. He used the word threat. I I don't know exactly what he's referring to there with respect to the, um, intergovernmental agreement on the use tax. Um, but I will say that he and I had a conversation a few weeks ago, and, um, he was concerned about the um, intergovernment, proposed intergovernmental agreement with the recycling and was, uh, making the argument that, um, folks out in the in the rural parts would be, um, double taxed because maybe a community like Ellsworth already pays a fee for some recycling and then this would be a a second tax on top of that, on top of that. So it'd be a double taxation. So I simply poked holes in his argument because I said, well, if you want to talk about double tax, I said, you know, you could argue that, um, people in Bloomington and Normal are being double taxed on county services, once on their property tax and secondly, on services that are a part of the one cent portion of their their portion of the one cent sales tax. So I said, you know, you you can't really go down that path on intergovernmental agreement issues. So if he saw that as a threat, um, I think he was misunderstood on the point that I was making. Um, I was simply just saying that, um, to to use the argument of double taxation was was probably not a very valid one or a very strong one. So, um, you know, I I am concerned that, um, I guess I'm just concerned with with the tone of of this whole conversation about, um, threats because we shouldn't be talking in terms of threats. Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted.
Ms. Reese?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was just, um, going to respond briefly. I'm not even sure how to get my hand down while I'm talking because I don't usually use my hand. I usually just blurt out, so sorry about that, council members, but um, I did want to explain the process of the Dropbox recycling program. Staff started talking with the city of Bloomington and McLean County probably a year ago at least about the future of the Dropbox recycling program. We had numerous conversations back in November. We had a group um, conference call where we talked about the details of what the intergovernmental agreement would look like. And then council might recall that earlier this year, council authora, a majority of council supported renewing our Dropbox program with Midwest Fiber. During that count, it was not unanimous. Mr. Nord, I believe you voted against renewing the Dropbox program and, um, in in part of that conversation during council discussion was that it was a temporary solution because we would be canceling the agreement if the city and the county chose not to support an intergovernmental agreement. So I'm not aware of any kind of threats or misunderstandings or miscommunication in that regard. I think it was clear from the start that if the three entities are not on board, that we would not have a Dropbox program any further. Um, so I I'm not sure any kind of can, I I don't believe there was confusion in that regard. Um, at least not at the staff level. And so now that the city, um, has approved the intergovernmental agreement and the county recently adopted the intergovernmental agreement, we will put the IGA on your June seventh agenda. It is a slightly different intergovernmental agreement than what we had originally anticipated. Initially, the draft proposal was a three-year agreement at a third each year. A a third share by each of the government entities. What the city and the county have adopted is the first year, year one, which is twenty-twenty-one calendar year. It would be a one-third share by each of the government entities. Ecology Action Center will conduct another evaluation and survey. So, um, they will determine what the use is based upon city, county, and town, um, users and then present to the city, county, and town that new, um, breakdown. And so years two and three will be based upon a new survey conducted by Ecology Action Center. But but just to be clear, um, the the discussion that town of Normal staff has had with our colleagues has been, um, positive yet factual. Council adopted the Dropbox recycling agreement with Midwest Fiber under the assumption that there would be an intergovernmental agreement with the three entities. And if the city and the county did not believe that the Dropbox recycling program um, was a priority for their budget, that's okay. And and we would have reacted accordingly, and Mr. Schumaker at Midwest Fiber knew that that was a risk. At this point, um, I'm pleased that the city and the county have found value in the program and that we will move forward. So, thank you.
Motion for adjournment, please.
Back in.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi, we are adjourned. Thank you.